Right, good evening councillors and everybody else. Welcome to this meeting of the executive. Item one on the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting which was on the 9th of July. The minutes have laid on the table for the requisite time. Do I have your agreement to sign them as a correct record please? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Apologies for absence.
None, chairman.
Thank you very much. Any declarations of interest before the meeting?
None received, chairman.
Councillors, any at the meeting? Thank you very much. Questions from members of the public?
None received, chairman.
Thank you. And questions from members of the council?
None received.
Thank you very much. We will therefore move into item six, climate emergency, and I would ask the portfolio holder to introduce it please.
Thank you, chairman. We've spent a lot of time drafting and redrafting this motion that you see before you today. Over recent weeks and months, and there's been much discussion with others and with officers as the shape of the motion has unfolded. And as it stands, it's therefore not really subject to amendment or inclusion of other issues because it has a very specific purpose, which is that of framing the council's response to what is now commonly recognised as a climate emergency. There are other issues associated with our desire to improve our environment and improve sustainability which we could have included, we could have tagged on to the motion relating specifically, for example, to the use, reducing the use and disposal of plastics, taking steps to improve biodiversity, trying to reduce particulate levels in the atmosphere, avoiding contamination of our water supplies, eliminating the use of glyphosate in the borough, rewilding our public spaces and so on. And some of those items do have an impact on climate change and do represent areas of work which we shall undoubtedly be involved with at some point. But as I said at the outset, this motion is specifically relating to the impact of climate change and as such it does four things. It first of all declares a climate emergency, it recognises, along with, and we would be alongside councils up and down the country, that recognises that there is a climate emergency. And it's a clear indication that we're taking the issue seriously, the issue actually of our planet burning up. It's not some fad or fashion, it's the considered judgement of the world's most eminent climate scientists. Secondly, the motion declares the intent of Waverley to become carbon neutral by 2030. And by 2030, which we know is a time critical date. Thirdly, like other local authorities declaring climate emergency, it calls on central government to facilitate the process because it is hugely challenging in the face of the impending cuts in central government financial support for local government over coming years. So we need the support of national government and we need to put the pressure on national government to put their money where their mouth is. And fourthly, it requires officers to produce an action plan within six months, including the milestones and metrics which will show progress towards that goal of carbon neutrality by 2030. And why 2030? Why not 2050? Why not 2040? Why not 2038? Or some other random date? And the answer is, I think, quite simple, that acting to stop irreversible climate change is time critical. We've already hit a 1 degree Celsius rise in global temperature above pre-industrial levels sooner than predicted. And on our current trajectory, nothing changing, we are likely to hit 1.5 degrees rise in global temperature by 2030. And we're then on a further trajectory to utterly catastrophic climate change. And that sort of threshold beyond 1.5 degrees is recognised as being a very crucial threshold. And even if we are successful in capping global temperature rises at 1.5 degrees, the prospects are still alarming and we need to be aware of those global issues. 90% of coral reefs will die. Heat waves, wildfires, fires will plague the planet each year with increasing frequency. Floods, droughts and the spread of infectious diseases will lead to diminishing animal and fish stocks, crop failures propel more people into food insecurity, political instability and consequent mass migrations. We cannot opt out of the growing movement across this country and across the world to take our climate crisis seriously. And there never has been a more important time to put into action the adage that we've heard over a number of years, think globally and act locally. And so I would beg to move the motion for the executive.
Thank you. I have four speakers down for this. Firstly, I have councillor Julia Potts.
Thank you very much, leader. I think mine's more of a statement than a question, but there is a short question at the end of this, and that is to the administration, but especially to councillor Williams as portfolio holder. Is the statement going to include a very clear message and in fact a very clear statement that Waverley Borough Council itself recognises that its actual contribution is much smaller than that of its citizens? And what we really need to make sure therefore is that our residents are all absolutely on board and behind this? And would they agree with that and what steps are going to be taken? Thank you.
Can I possibly pick up the part of that and then I will throw the portfolio holder into the mire? We have very deliberately in item four included and the local community in what we want our committee, for want of a better word, to produce some support for. And we certainly acknowledge that we need, as well as needing government, we need the local community to be thoroughly on side. And we hope that this motion will be, if you like, an encouragement for the local community, that we're not just asking them to do things, we are going to lead by example. And we certainly hope we have their support and that they will follow our example. Do you want to add further?
I was going to make that point, that we did actually add in that reference to the local community because it's particularly important. And I think councillor Potts is absolutely correct. You know, this is not something that we can do alone. And one of the major aspects, one of the major elements that I would expect to see in the action plan, once officers produce this action plan, is how we are going to engage with local residents and local businesses to ensure that the actions that are taken to respond to the climate emergency across Waverley are not just confined to council activities.
Councillor Follows.
Thank you, leader. Just to also comment on that too, I think the implicit acknowledgement of this activity within the local community is, other than being enshrined particularly in point four, also I think about almost everybody in this room stood on an electoral platform that included some level of climate change, combating climate change as part of their manifesto. So I think in practice, our being elected with that as part of our platform shows that the community are engaged on this subject, they expect us to do something on this subject. And I absolutely commend councillor Williams for the initiative of getting this to us. We've obviously all added some things to this and we're extending, I think, a pretty radical agenda that we started in Godleming and bringing it forward to the borough level. And I think actually this is well tailored for the borough. It creates a group that allows us to work on the practicalities of that without committing to anything that is going to be beyond our powers and beyond our scope. And it also allows us to engage and bring residents on board with us as we do that, rather than dictating to them from the dais effectively. So I think actually it's well covered. Thank you.
Have councillor Seaborn down to speak?
Thank you, leader. I find the intent of this climate emergency proposal completely laudable. The reason I wish to speak this evening is to request that a little more clarity be brought to the document before it goes to council, so that all members have a clearer understanding of what they're being asked to support when it comes to the debate on September the 18th. Section two of the paper is entitled Becoming a Carbon Neutral Council. Paragraph 2.2 states that the changes required over the next 11 years to become carbon neutral are already well documented. And recommendation 2.1 sets out an aim for Waverley to become carbon neutral by 2030. And carbon neutrality can come through a variety of routes. Emissions can be eliminated, carbon capture programmes can be put in place, and emissions can be traded. I'd like to suggest that a short appendix be added to the paper explaining the various routes to carbon neutrality and ideally setting out at a high level the route that this council will be asked to take. As it stands, the proposal is asking members to embark on a journey without any clarity over the modes of transport that are available to them. Are we being expected to use one mode or multiple modes and which mode will dominate? I realise that the details of the journey will come from the sixth month study recommended in the paper, but I believe it would be easier for members to support that study if the paper briefly outlines the broad direction of travel that is anticipated. Thank you, leader.
Thank you councillor Seaborn. We will take your message on board and consider it carefully. Thank you. Councillor Jenny Els?
Thank you very much. So we know that the ambition is to become a carbon neutral council by 2030, but I would just like to know whether you've actually started yet, what you've actually done and how you plan to engage with towns and parish councils? Because I think that they will very much need to be brought on board to sign up to this ambitious programme. Has it started yet, is my question, I suppose?
Thank you. Some of us have bought electric cars, so yes, it has started. And already Godleming Council has produced this motion. I believe Farnham is likely to follow in the near future. So yes, we are engaging with local councils. And I think councillor Follows would also like to speak.
Yeah, just to add to this, first off, the point of this motion is absolutely not to put the cart before the horse. And in practice, we won't have started doing many of these things until we've actually put the motion through, created the group to study it and understood what the problem is. You cannot commit to a set of actions before you've established a proper baseline, which is one of the things this paper commits to doing. So absolutely, we are getting there. This is the point of this motion. I would also add engagement with towns and parishes. Actually, towns and parishes have been leading the way on a lot of this. And I would certainly refer you to the motion put before and passed by Godleming Town Council several weeks ago, which absolutely sets the sort of tack that were going on for this sort of motion. And I would certainly recommend to other parishes and other towns within the borough to be considering the motions going before Farnham and also Hazelmeir, as well as the one passed in Godleming, as a potential template for localising how they deliver this sort of climate change motion.
I now have councillor Hyman.
Thank you, leader. Yes, as with other major issues that are in the news at the moment, the public are split on this sort of issue. There has been a very effective Extinction Rebellion campaign which has brought this in front of a number of councils. And I think it's admirable what they've done. You know, I've banged the drum for the environment for many years and I do know and have known for many years some of the members of the new Extinction Rebellion team in Farnham. So rather in some way, rather than be accused of having a specific interest or having predetermined this, I think behoves me to play devil's advocate to some extent. We have to satisfy the doubters as well as, you know, satisfying all those who we know who are strongly in favour of what we're doing here. To some extent, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't with this sort of item. If we were to say, as many people would probably suggest, that we should have the scrutiny first before bringing this forward, then we could have a year or six months of scrutiny or whatever and we would be accused of delay for the sake of it and all the rest. So I think it's very brave of this council to bring it forward. There isn't a lot we're actually committing to at the moment, so I don't think there's a great danger in what we do. But I would like to know specifically if there's any member who's fully au fait, I know Steve knows quite a lot about it, but particularly with the depth of knowledge of the IPCC reports from 2014 and 2018, 2018 based on the 2014 report, and the NiPCC counter arguments as well, because we're going to obviously want someone to be able to answer any questions at the council meeting in a couple of weeks' time. We have got to reflect the concerns of those who recall over many, many years, peak oil arguments, you know, we've got to do something now because of peak oil, we've got to do something now because of global cooling. We've heard these sorts of things and a lot of people are still sceptical. We don't want on the other side to be seen as being tokenistic, just empty words, as other councils have been accused. But it is a great opportunity for us to set the example. But we do have to be absolutely certain that we're doing the right thing, particularly because of the uncomfortable behaviour change by the council and particularly residents and businesses, the expense of doing this properly and the inconvenience of doing it. For instance, Extinction Rebellion Australia suggests that all non-statutory spending by councils should be diverted to climate change. That is a massive change. If we would provide virtually no services that are outside of our statutory services, everything, grants, everything gone, all put into climate change. So, you know, we do need to look at this carefully. We'd need to have very strong enforcement, proper recycling to minimise contamination. There are all sorts of planning powers, are the major powers that we've got, and we would really have to go big time on our planning powers to stop urbanisation, which is what, you know, a lot of the cause of global warming, as I think the IPCC have stressed. We will require primary legislation by the government. We may need a strong cohesive campaign by residents and the council together in order to be able to get that. And if we're going to do that, Extinction Rebellion heavily into environmental protection, but two main issues, climate change and species extinction. And we know from what the government have just put out in their planning guidance that they have at last admitted that we have not been abiding by the habitats legislation for the past 12 years. It's time we did it now. And I'd like you please to start off and kick the ball off before we even go to council, just by confirming, leader, that we will require proper complete appropriate assessments, proper conservation objectives and bird population dynamics and numbers in appropriate assessments, and assessment of the mitigation, the same and same mitigation before any further items in the zones around the heaths come to our council, to show that we're serious about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hyman. I do assure you, we will be considering all that, but the whole point of putting a programme of six months' consideration is to avoid a number of things. One is, we are uncertain of direction, all of us are, and we need to basically familiarise ourselves and do a lot of research in conjunction with local councillors and outside bodies to see which way we firmly suggest the council will go. We want to avoid any uninformed knee-jerk reactions that suddenly set us off on one path or the other, but I thoroughly take on board what you have said and it will have careful consideration, I am sure, by the group that are looking at it.
Yeah, can I just add to that, that I do believe because of the discussion that has actually taken place over the past weeks and months with colleagues, with councillors, with officers, this is really a measured response, but it is a measured response to an emergency and a recognition of that emergency. And there is, I think, growing public recognition of that emergency. If one actually considers, 12 months ago, had anybody in this room heard of Extinction Rebellion? And now everybody in this room has heard of Extinction Rebellion? And the effect, I believe, is going to be cumulative. I think it is very important that we do have the evidence and that we do marshal the arguments. But I would certainly assure councillor Hyman, because I think it is important that there is this reassurance, that officers have already started looking to the practical, you know, nitty gritty implications of what declaring a climate emergency and becoming neutral actually means for this council. And it is the case that should we pass this resolution, should we pass this motion, every action of this council will be measured in terms of its implications on climate change. And that is something that needs to thread through everything that we do. And there is a recognition that this is not an issue which is compartmentalised in a box, it's a cross-cutting issue which actually affects the work of everyone who works for this council and all councillors who actually are elected to this council.
Thank you. Before I put the motions anywhere else on the executive, wish to speak? Councillor Palmer?
Yeah, just to take a common thread from a number of the questions, I think it's important to stress that what we're doing here is starting a process. We are not making a conclusive decision. We are committing ourselves to a process where over the coming years, the decisions that we take will be informed by the climate emergency motion that we're going to be putting to council, and will also be informed by what the parish and town council are saying. And I think the point that councillor Potts made, that we really need to engage the public at large, is going to loom ever larger as we move into the practical implementation. Because at the moment, we're passing a motion or we're proposing to pass a motion which has many desirable objectives. The test of public opinion will come when we have to take decisions where option A is for, has a climate implication that we don't like but may have other attractions. And so we will need to engage the public on issues where the climate emergency is given priority. And I think that it's only at that point that many people will become really engaged with it, because they will actually see how it influences the decisions that we collectively take. And I hope that the fact that all the parties here are supporting the objective will help engage the public in that. I think it's really important, it's a mission for all of us.
Thank you. Any other member of the executive wish to speak? Do you wish to sum up, portfolio holder, or are you content?
I'm content.
Thank you very much councillor. Then therefore I will put the formal motion to council. For the sake of the webcast, I will read it. It is on page four of your agenda. It is the executive recommends to council that, one, Waverley Borough Council declares a climate emergency requiring urgent action. Two, Waverley Borough Council aims to become carbon neutral by 2030, taking into account both production and consumption emissions, and takes a leadership role to achieve this, working with other councillors, including town and parish councils within the borough. Three, Waverley Borough Council recognises that the achievement of the target will require central government to provide the powers, funding and other resources to achieve the target, and therefore calls on the government to provide such powers, funding and other resources as appropriate to facilitate achieving the 2030 target. And four, officers be instructed to provide to the council's executive, within six months of the date of this decision, a report on the actions the council and the local community can take to address these issues, together with an action plan specifying year-on-year milestones and metrics to show progress towards achieving the goal of carbon neutrality by 2030, noting any additional costs that might be involved. Is that meeting with your approval, members of the executive?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item seven, which is Waverley Borough Corporate Strategy. And before we move forward, I would like to propose an amendment from the chair which is in front of you rather than the one that appears on page 15. In my view, this is an up amendment of some of the things which we didn't quite express with the clarity that we had hoped, and I hope I have a second.
Chair happy to second.
Unless any member wishes to speak on that, I would like to put that amendment to the executive straight away. Is that agreed?
Yes, agreed.
Thank you very much. Okay, that then becomes the amended motion. And I have four speakers. The first one is councillor Julia Potts.
Thank you very much, leader. I've read through the corporate strategy and obviously seen the amendments that you're proposing as well, which I welcome. My question is actually around the point in your vision on housing, housing to buy and to rent for those at all income levels. Clearly, as I'm sure you'll agree, what is of major importance for us in Waverley is housing for key workers. And what I'd like to understand a little bit more is how you plan to deliver this? And would it be possible for us to actually see a little bit more and see that quantified within this strategy? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that is a very valuable question which I have much interest in, but I will ask the housing portfolio holder to comment.
Thank you, leader. Councillor Potts, I agree with you, it's a really important aspect of housing. And we didn't want the wording here to just mention affordable social, we wanted to make it inclusive, because affordable in this neck of the woods is often far from reality. So we're looking at a combination of different proposals and trying to think slightly outside the box to try and deliver more housing, because people on even a medium income can have a real amount of trouble actually getting their foot on the housing ladder or finding a market rent they can afford. So we're trying to make it inclusive and there's a lot of studies going on at the moment, we're doing a lot of work in the background to try and identify sites to bring forward. And we will engage with you at the earliest opportunity to provide further details.
Thank you. Next question I have is councillor Gray.
Thank you, leader. Having seen this item on the agenda and looking at the recommendations, my expectations were set in terms of what I expected to find. I certainly would compliment you on your previous item in terms of clarity. And I think that that was brought home to me by a group of people in Italy who were marching on climate change, and one of the banners said eco, not ego. And I think that was a very telling situation. Historically, the councils put a lot of time in on corporate strategy and creating an environment where officers and members can actually be at one and we can have a measurable, a specific set of a a specific set of objectives, timelines and everything else in it. Being respectful to the executive here, this is more like a political statement rather than a plan or a corporate strategy. There are a number of areas in there which gives me cost concerns, until they are actually evaluated, until we can actually put an overall value for money framework on these, then it's difficult to see how we can take them forward to a plan. So I would commend you to find a way of working closely with officers, to defining objectives that we can see that are going to be measurable and be timely, and also to identify the resident benefits. I mean, some of those are implied. It's hard to object to any of the statements, say that. The statements in themselves are good quality statements of aspiration, but they are not good quality statements for a corporate strategy. My question to you is, well, will we have a plan? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. I quite take your point about costs. We have very deliberately, as you've seen in the previous motion and in this one, attempted to be as succinct as possible and to produce things that are not wordy tomes. We have been on seat for, what, four months now? And in order to produce a 60-page strategy, which I've certainly seen in the past, or even a 20 or 40-page one, would have taken far too long. When I took over as leader, I promised there would be no knee-jerk reaction and no seismic changes, and that we would think carefully. We have got to the stage now where we are bringing forward to you the outline of our strategy, and thank you for your comment that there are no objections to what we're doing. I do take on board totally your cost implications, and the idea of this document, rather like the previous one, is this is the way we want to go, this is the path we want to go down, and we will certainly be liaising very closely with officers and putting some meat on the bones, if you like. And doubtless, some smart objectives will come before you in, I suppose, in the passage of time. But in the time that we have been to many peoples, and possibly our own, the executive, we have felt that this is time to bring a broad strategy forward, and yes, there will be a lot of meat on the bones behind this, and we may well find that some of our aspirations are unaffordable, but hopefully we will find that there are ways of achieving as many as possible. But I thank you for your support of the general aim, and I take on board your question, and yes, we are looking at putting more meat on this, but that's going to take more time than we wanted to before bringing this before the council.
Thank you leader. Just to also comment on this, at the last full council, a member of the opposition group made it clear, well, raised a question as to how my particular group was going to meet its particular manifesto pledges. And one of the questions that that set off with all of us is making sure that the new cross-party executive, its particular aims and objectives for all the parties involved were actually unified up into something that was a common platform that we all bought into and understood, and that was important for officers to be able to see where we were going and our direction. I think when we look at some of the previous incarnations of strategies, and also, I mean, a few of us had a look at strategy documents from other councils and other organisations, to me, a strategy document is a very high-level direction-setting instrument. It is not 60 pages full of fleshed-out objectives and targets right off the bat. That comes later, and each section in here will be properly assessed with such targets so that we all understand what we're actually trying to do. Though I think in practice, this tries to bring together a fairly wide set of objectives that many of the groups in this new executive came into the council with. There are obviously compromises that everyone has to make, because that is absolutely the nature of cooperation that is required in such an incarnation of the council. I think really what the electorate was telling us by electing a no-over-all control council was to actually, you go and work out what is a compromised set of deliverable objectives and work that out. I think that's exactly what we've done here, and I think every member of the executive and their respective parties has worked very hard to try and bring those objectives together. The next step is to flesh each one of them out in detail, but I think in terms of a strategy document, this meets that high-level direction setting that shows residents, it shows councillors, and it shows officers where we're going. I just also want to particularly thank councillor Williams and councillor MacLeod for putting in a lot of the legwork to bring together some of the particulars of all the parties to bring this together today. But yeah, hopefully that answers some of your question as well, councillor Gray. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jenny Els.
Thank you leader. So I have read your vision for Waverley, and I am very, very surprised and not a little disappointed that with our increasingly aging population, there isn't a mention anywhere about age. You mention vulnerability, particularly experiencing domestic abuse, which is very laudable, but there's, I can't see that there is any mention of age. You want to recognise the value and worth of all residents, regardless of income, wealth, disability, race, gender or sexual orientation. Please, could I ask that you include age in that description? And also perhaps, one of your points during your four-year term of office could include a concentration on our aging population? Please, thank you. Oh, sorry leader, so sorry, I did just have one other point. Do you mind? May I make it? Will you allow? Thank you. So about two-thirds of the way down in your promises for your four-year term of office, you say, excuse me, you're going to promote reduction and reuse as well as recycling. I wonder if we could have a little more clarity, if you could be a little bit more specific about what it is you're going to promote the reduction of and how? Thank you.
I'll throw this to someone else.
Now, happy to pick up that last point. What we're talking here is about, is about the issue of recycling. We often sort of focus on recycling, but that still presents us with a problem in terms of the quantity of materials that are being produced, which has an impact on the climate. So alongside recycling, we have got to also be promoting the reuse of materials, and that reduces the quantity of waste that we have, and we have got to promote the reduction in the quantity of materials that we consume. So for example, one of those, an example of that could well be drinking our water out of plastic bottles. Yeah, we certainly need to reduce the quantity of plastics that are used, because that is well-publicised, both in terms of the impact on climate change, the impact on our oceans and the impact on our wildlife.
Thank you for that. I now have councillor Hyman. Sorry, councillor MacLeod wish to speak.
Thank you leader. I thought I should pick up on councillor Els's point, actually, as one of the people who wrote the very early version of this, and as one of the people who is probably in the category that councillor Els is referring to, one of the ageing members, if you like, I think she's made a good point, and I think we should take it on board, and I think we should actually make a reference to age in the document. So I thank her for her suggestion, I think it's a good one.
Thank you very much. I now have councillor Gerry Hyman.
Thank you leader. Yes, I don't know how many of you saw the Channel Five article on politicians and why are they so rubbish last night, which was a rubbish programme itself. I wish they could have produced something better about rubbish politicians. But one of the things that came out of it, I think that a lot of the public don't like is the lack of consistency amongst people who are on our councils, and particularly they were talking about MPs, of course, they seem to forget that there's an awful lot of politicians in local government, and that's what Farnham residents are trying to solve. We need consistency, and I would have, you know, if this had been put in front of me last year by the Conservatives, well, actually it was, two or three years ago, something like this was, and councillor Gray and I made a, and others, did try to fight strongly for defined, measurable, timely objectives, as he puts it, and the benefits for residents in the corporate strategy, which was something which our new chief executive officer put in front of us in his very early days, and we put quite a lot of effort into trying to get something meaningful in front of us. I wasn't happy with it because there weren't the real objectives, but what we ended up with was something where we had three key themes, people place prosperity, so we were able to put them into, put things into boxes quite easily, and that then fed into the ONS system. So this works very closely with the system that we've got. We also had in there's a number of statements, if we're ditching this completely, a lot of it actually, I wouldn't want to ditch completely, to be frank, because we put in a lot of hard work to try and get some good stuff put into there amongst all its difficulties. I'm very concerned that the original one has absolutely no vision in there, no real vision, no imagination, that's what vision is. And I would have to unfortunately say that I don't think we've improved on that in any great way, if I can put that nicely, that way. There are certainly lack of specific aims, measurable aims, in the corporate strategy which was adopted by the Conservatives. You know, I wasn't happy about that, I think we're still lacking, and I do think actually the real problem here perhaps is that what we need is a corporate plan, we've got nothing between the corporate strategy and the service plans, because what the corporate strategy does is then ends up in the service plans, and the service plans are how everything gets done. We need to be guiding those service plans more, and I don't think this does it. So what I'd actually like to see is this as an annex to the corporate strategy, as opposed to, really, in my heart, if I'm honest with you guys, I would like to see it as an annex to stamp, you know, what has been agreed by the different parties as a basis, and then we can get into the proper job of putting something in front of the scrutiny groups and producing a really good corporate plan and corporate strategy for the council. I think that's what we need. I do have some difficulties with how this will tie in with the service plans and ONS. I'd like that to be answered by next week, or if the executive would like to consider adopting it as an annex to the corporate strategy until we can look at it perhaps in some greater detail, because we did put a lot of effort into this, and I know most people on the new executive aren't aware of it, but we did put a lot of effort into trying to get stuff into the corporate strategy. I was very unhappy with what the Conservatives were doing then. I would love to be really happy with what we're doing, and I'm very slightly short of that, I'm afraid, so more please.
Thank you for that. We will take your comments on board. If I can just pick up on a couple of comments from councillor Els. We do have in there what might be called an all-inclusive reference to high-quality public services accessible for all, which does include age, but sharing the burden with councillor MacLeod of being one of the aging population who would love to be considered, I would be perfectly happy in the paragraph that councillor Els mentioned to insert age after or before disability in that comment, and I would be happy to propose that from here, if I could have a second.
Absolutely pleased to second.
So would we be happy with inserting age in that as?
Agreed.
Agreed? Thank you very much. Do any members of the executive wish to speak further? Fine, then councillor MacLeod.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a general comment, if I may, that the purpose of this document, in my opinion, in many ways directed at the general public, actually, so they can see in one page what this new administration at Waverley document is aiming to do, Waverley council is aiming to do in their four-years' term, and they can hold us accountable for that at the end of the period. They'll be able to look back at this document in four-years' time and say, how far has this administration delivered against these objectives? To my mind, that's the objective of the whole thing, so I hope people understand that, and I hope generally they support it. Understand the comments about it needs to be further developed, every one of these points needs to be developed significantly, but it's very important, in my view, to get down in one page what this combined group of people want to do in the four-years' term, so we can be held accountable for it at the end of that period. So that's my comment, leader, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments in the executive? Councillor Williams, is it?
Indeed. Just a very brief comment, and that is just a reminder to us all that there are four political groups represented on this executive, and actually, this statement and this vision, and I do see this as a vision, is actually a vision that I think all of us can feel signed up to, and certainly I would feel that, yeah, I might have sort of produced a different vision if it had been down to me, but actually, this is about a different way of doing politics. It is about collaborative working, it's about collaboration rather than party tribalism, and that's been the watchword of this council executive since it started its work, and I feel proud to be a member of that executive.
Follow that, somebody. Right, anyone else in the executive wish to say anything? Okay, fine, then you'll be pleased to read, I'm not, no, I'm not going to read the whole of that thing to you. The revised recommendation is that the executive recommends the adoption of the Waverley Borough Corporate Strategy 2019 to 2023, as attached at Annex One, as amended by this piece of paper that you all have, and as further amended by the introduction of age at the appropriate point. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item eight, which is in the hands of the finance portfolio holder.
Thank you leader. This is a recommendation to approve a supplementary estimate of £20,000 to continue a very long-running enforcement action. It's a very basic principle, it's enforcement of clearance of some land which has been wrongfully occupied for many years. The council has persevered over those many years, it has been upheld at every opportunity, and this is taking us to an injunction, hopefully, at the end of the year. It's a very measured, very appropriate further step in something which is a drain on our time, on our resources, very unfortunate, but very necessary, and I hope it will have everyone's support.
Thank you. I have two speakers on this. Can I remind everybody that part of this is on pink paper at the end, so please do not stray into there. And the first speaker I have is councillor Jenny Els.
Yeah, thank you leader, I have nothing to ask, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have is councillor Gerry Hyman.
I've got to find it difficult to know whether or not I'm straying into exempt here, because I can't access exempt papers on my iPad, and I haven't got a copy of the exempt papers, I haven't seen the exempt papers, but I'm not really going to talk about those. The most important thing here is, of course, that we are seen to be enforcing and making everybody play by the same rules, and I think that's absolutely vitally important, which is, you know, obviously ties in with the first point I made here this evening, are we going to obey the law in respect of habitats? Because how can we go to other people saying, you've got to play by the rules, when the government's admitted from their own documents? I mean, the way the government says it, they're saying that the way that we're going to have to do things in future is a departure from the approach established by domestic... is a departure from the approach established by domestic case law. What a lovely way of saying that we're not playing by the rules. We need to play by the rules. We need to make sure that everybody is playing by the rules. I support this item absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hyman. Anyone on the executive wish to speak? In that case, I will put the recommendation to us. It is recommended that the executive approve a supplementary estimate of £20,000 to meet the cost of continuing to seek an injunction. This figure may need to be revised depending on the works associated with the application and any subsequent proceedings. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. We do not need to exclude the press and public. We do not have any items that we wish to discuss in the exempt session. So thank you, everybody. The session is closed.